It's August 15th at 5:30 PM and I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda is our city update. So, Ms. Lyle, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council and Mayor Gradisar. This evening's updates are as follows. The one week, for the first, the COVID info, the one week cumulative positivity case count was 181.7 with the positivity rate at 6.8 and the Pueblo County is reporting eight days of COVID hospitalizations that are stable and not increasing. The second update is ARPA and I forward to you not long ago, right before I came down, the update on the running total balance as a result of your city council actions on last Monday's meeting, both with the regular ARPA balance and with the lost revenue balance in there in two separate files. With your actions last week, it leaves the ARP update to add the July interest, update the expenditures that were approved for a balance of $11,065,150. And the lost revenue, there's pending updates in that list for next Monday. And they start next Monday. There's three new projects that'll be presented. There's a HARP fiber, fiber relocation project for $250,000. That will extend the fiber for the HARP extension project. There's an electric trash truck for Parks and Rec for $150,000. That is probably a few weeks away before it will be presented. And the third is adjustment for the cost of the fire department pumper truck. The actual cost will be at RFP return, $730,000. So we'll be coming with a request for your approval of an additional 230. You had approved in that initial list a half a million dollars and the cost has increased and a delivery date of, I think, more than 12 months. So with those three changes, it leaves a remaining balance of the $10 million down to an unallocated $1,852,149 in that lost revenue bucket of money. I can move on to some exciting news about grants. So I sent the press release last Thursday that the city was so excited to announce the award of $16.8 million for the West Side Connector Project is what we named it when the grant was filed. It was approved by the US Department of Transportation out of the Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, or they called it the RAISE Grant. It was supported by Governor Polis and Senators Bennett and Hickenlooper. The project will connect the West Side to the city downtown. The new planned, the new planned streets will connect from Spalding, now Sun Mountain Boulevard, or soon to be, that will extend 24th to 31st Street. I mean, it has 70 West Side bus stops that'll be built to comply with ADA standards. And the third component will consist of the planning and design for a 24th Street Bridge that will connect into the city. A very cool grant. We're estimating the largest grant that we can look back to see that the city has awarded, has been awarded in many, many years as the Finance Department looks back to find one of that dollar amount. Besides, of course, ARPA. And earlier today, to surprise to everyone, Black Hills Energy hosted a Join the EV Revolution. Mr. Christian Willis from the Colorado Energy Office, he is the Senior Director of Transportation, Fuels and Technology. He announced to the public that the city of Pueblo had been awarded a Charge Ahead Colorado Electric Vehicle Grant. And it will provide the city with eight new electric vehicle charging stations, four to be placed at the Weisberg parking garage and four at the Main Street Garage. So that grant award will come through and will be presented for appropriating and budgeting when we receive the agreement. Upcoming though, and that's new, on your next week's work session, it's the last presentation. The Pueblo Bulls will present a project for the Pueblo Bulls Hockey Club Incorporated to lease and manage the operations of the Pueblo Ice Arena as that they are there full time. They have some new ideas. It is listed, I think, on next week's work session updates. And that does conclude city updates for this evening. Do you have any questions or directions or future reports you'd like from me?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. I wanted to call out that the RAISE Grant, the connectivity to the West Side Grant, is actually, will have its own work session. And that's going to be on September 26th where we can find out more about how that whole grant. I think it'll be really good for Joe Martinez, too.
And the additional presenters that evening, I see listed as Andrew Hayes will be Ben out of the Transit Department.
Perfect. What questions are there for Ms. Solano? Counselor Flores?
I don't have a question, but I have an issue that was brought up by a citizen. And I think he makes a lot of sense dealing with our overgrown weeds. And I was hoping that, this is really not a question, but just an ask for looking in our weed ordinances to see whether or not we can tighten them up. I get a call once a year. The gentleman's name is Mark Scar. He's a very nice gentleman and he just lets me know every year what's going to happen. And he's indicated, and he lives in the area between Elizabeth and West, between 12th and 13th. And he says, every year, and I can vouch for this for the five years I've been on city council, he will call me and he says, there's eight properties that will not cut their weeds until they get the citation. And then they're given a chance to do that and then they do it. But they, but it's just like, the question that he posed is that he thinks that we should not, you know, we should not, he called them repeat weed offenders. And so he says guaranteed, you probably know who they are because we've got the documentation because of the citations. And he says, why do you give them the citation at the end of the summer when they've had these weeds all summer long, as high as you can imagine? He says, why don't you go directly to fining them? And he says, I am sure that it would stop if we did that. And I would like, if you don't mind, Dan, for you to look at our weed ordinances and just tighten that up in that area where we're saying, we know who you are. We know that you're going to, you're just going to wait till the last minute while our city looks ugly with all these weeds. Well, from this point on, we're going to, we're just going to go directly to go. And it, I guarantee you, within a couple of years, that'll stop. But, you know, we need to see whether or not it fits, you know, whether or not we can do it. And, and I'm just asking for us to look at it. And that's really all I have.
Counselor Warner?
Yeah, to answer your question, Dennis, we passed an ordinance, I think in 2017, that if you're a repeat offender, you can go right to go with a violation. Also, if you receive a second violation, you're required to appear in court and explain why you are a chronic offender. So I guess we need to just make sure that's happening. Some of these folks probably don't care. I know there's a guy on Prairie that just waits every year for the city to abate. And he pays the $500 fee, which is much cheaper probably than landscaping all summer. So there's got to be a way to tighten that up.
I talked to him this morning and I'm, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at the ordinance. But if that's already there in place, why are we giving them just a warning? I mean, if it's already there, I'm saying go directly to the fine. So.
Counselor Mastry?
I wanted to ask, with this federal, this grant, that's a bipartisan infrastructure law grant, correct?
It is.
Okay, so I was reading up on it. It says, nothing is free. Federal infrastructure projects are cost shared with the local government that has granted the award. Generally, generally, the federal government will provide up to 80% of the funding while local government pays about 20% or less. So I realize that we're going to probably have to come up with, you know, our share of it. One of the suggestions that they say, and I would just like for council to keep in mind is that we can pull that share out of ARPA funds. So before we spend the rest of the ARPA funds, maybe we need to consider the needs of the cities and the grants that we're receiving so that we can come up with those shared costs.
Thank you, Counselor. This particular grant where the city was extremely fortunate that the follow-up message was the receipt of the entire 16.8 without requiring a match, which was very unusual and infrequent as they rolled out that first award cycle. So we were.
So I also noticed that National City Leagues or CML, one of the two, was offering classes to municipalities so that they can receive further grants. Is the city of Pueblo participating in that?
Yes, we attend the NLC Grants, Information Bluebird's Grants, National Mayor's League of Grants meetings. So as many as we can, we split it between the Law Department, the Mayor's Office and the Finance Office and our grant writer. There are local ones provided by DOLA every other week as well.
Well, this is just particularly for the bipartisan infrastructure law grant.
And they have, you sign up for the infrastructure hub. And let me send you the information. I believe elected officials have access to the hub as well. I'll send you that because then it actually gave really good peer kind of grant look that are sitting in there when cities have an opportunity to go one way or the other. Your peer city grants are included in that hub as well.
And would we be considered a disadvantaged city for any of that grant funding? Is that because they are saying that there is a possibility that if we are considered, then our, our shared cost is less?
Yeah, and our share of the cost in this one was zero because of that, I think, category of disadvantaged city. So we didn't, you know, we were prepared for a $2 million match. The other thing that we've been looking into are those matches, particularly by grant allocation, will allow to come out of ARPA 11 million or ARPA lost revenue, depending on how the grant is worded. And so we, it would have been a different story, I believe, if this, we would have been saying something different if it was required to come out of lost revenue. But this one, we were fortunate enough not to have to match. There are others in the works, though, so I totally understand and agree with you with respect to the matching dollars depending on grant.
Well, yeah, that would be great to, you know, maintain, to increase our infrastructure here with these, with this opportunity and to be able to have the matching funds to do so. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Counselor Martinez. I know at least three of us have been requesting some trash cans outside of the state fair. With the fair coming up next week, we've yet to receive an answer from anybody. And I know Counselor Martinez or Tega has asked, Counselor Martinez has asked, and I've asked several times. And I can't get that, a follow-up on that or what we're doing. Next, I still haven't received the invoice for the JAM. And then do you have a date or have you been in contact with the Health Department on the trash meeting that I've been asking you about for the last few weeks?
I've sent the email only over to staff, so I have not directly connected with it. I think the last time President Graham and I met, we looked at an October 6th, if I recall, potential next Saturday, City Public Health Department sponsored community trash cleanup after the fair, after the Children's Holiday Festival, finding a good date that doesn't go too far in October. So I will have an update for you and actually have the JAM invoice I can send them.
Great. And then do you have an update on the small business parameters that you said you would send to Fridays ago?
I did send to you the original one and told you that I think our sales tax department wanted to go back and look through. And Val was on vacation. She'll be back on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
But I do have an update about the state fair trash. If I believe I could ask the mayor for assistance. And I think that, I think our department director, I think Andrew Hayes replied to Counselor Martinez with respect to that the street sweeping plans were in place, but that no trash cans would be placed. As speaking with the general manager of the Colorado State Fair, there were enough trash cans on the inside of the fair before exiting. Is that the correct update?
Yeah, there are trash cans right before you walk out of the fairgrounds where people can deposit their trash.
But they've been there for years, right?
Right, they've been there for years.
But this is a problem that that whole, I mean, they had a whole meeting.
Well, if people aren't going to use those trash cans, what makes us think they'll use them if they're parked in the neighborhood?
I don't agree necessarily with that respectfully, Mayor. It's almost like we can't have enough trash receptacles. We can't have enough recycling receptacles around anywhere, any public area. And so if we give folks, if we don't give folks the opportunity to throw their trash outside of the fairgrounds onto public grounds, then we're giving them no choice but where to throw trash outside, just anywhere.
How many trash cans you think we could put out there?
I would, at least 20.
20?
Yeah, I would hope. I don't see why you can't put 10. You don't think that's like possible?
I really don't. And I think the burden of doing that far outweighs the benefit.
I disagree. I would disagree and some of those neighbors around there would disagree as well. I mean, it's the same thing with porta-potties. You know, I wasn't pushing for that. I understand how that could be a real, like, it's an issue for folks to walk from all the way from parking blocks away to have no public restrooms. And then to have to ask, to have the wherewithal to know to go and ask inside the, inside of the the front gates and then make it to the 4H and then some of that constant. Okay, so I didn't push on that, but I am pushing on these trash cans because that's like, that's just basics. Like, those are just the basic necessities for people standing in line and leaving and exiting huge events like that. Trash can, that's probably one of the most basic things we can provide with like the least amount of resources even put behind it. I don't understand why that's.
They are provided.
Inside, not outside.
Fairgrounds where people are leaving those events.
They're leaving outside of the events. They're leaving with a bunch of garbage and stuff in their hands on their way out to their vehicles. Like, you know, not everybody gets special parking passes like we all do to go park inside. They have to walk to their cars blocks and blocks away. And so I don't understand why that's even, like, I don't know. I don't understand why there's like even that much pushback. I think trash cans outside, Andrew Hayes is walking in, I think trash cans outside will be, is totally, it's not unreasonable.
Any other, Counselor Flores?
I just wanted to make a comment, whatever it's worth, you know, there's a, there's a difference between what we're supposed to be doing here as city council and trying to micromanage the executive part of the city. That's really the mayor's responsibility. And we're getting very, very petty to be talking about trash cans and all this other thing, simply because it's really not in our purview. Now, if we want to change an ordinance that's going to be effective, what we're really talking about here is the state of Colorado responsibility, even because they own the land right up to the street, including those areas outside the state fairgrounds. But I just, I just have to say this because we constantly are trying to micromanage the mayor when in fact, this is, you know, this is his responsibility, not ours.
But Dennis, you brought up an issue about weeds earlier.
By changing an ordinance so that we can, we can, we have as a city council the impact to affect things on a grander scale by the improving of our ordinances and our, and our resolutions.
But yes.
For us to spend so much time now on 10 trash cans or 20 trash cans when that's really the directors and the mayor's responsibility.
But we're the ones receiving the phone calls and the people that are talking to us in our districts about that.
We should refer those.
And Mayor, you were at that town hall where people were complaining about feces in their yard and diapers and trash all over the place.
And, you know, that's because people are not being responsible. I mean, come on now, we could, we could hire enough people, I guess, to follow everybody out of the fairgrounds and make sure they dispose of their trash properly or that they don't urinate in the street. But let's be realistic here. You know, that fair's been there for 150 years, long before those houses were there. Those people, when they moved into that neighborhood, knew there was going to be a fair there for 17 days or 10 days. I think we've have made accommodations for them. We've doubled the sweeping there and we're doubling the area we're going to sweep. And if trash becomes a problem, we'll take another look at it. But, you know.
Which is the hugest problem in the city right now. We allocated $300,000 for trash cleanup. So let's use some of that money. You have three counselors up here that have been asking, that have been requesting these trash cans. What's, what's the feat, what's the fight for?
It won't do any good. That's what the fight's for.
Okay, tell us that when the trash.
Yeah, let's see how it comes.
Well, sure. The neighbors might like it. Because then they don't have to have trash.
Isn't that what we're supposed to be up here doing is satisfying the citizens?
Satisfying the citizens?
Yes.
Yeah, sometimes we have to.
I think that's our job. I think that's the entirety of our job as a council and as a mayor.
Okay. We're going to circle back to our agenda. Are there any other comments or questions for Ms. Solano at this time?
I do. Have you got our lobbyist on the agenda yet for a work session?
That's a good question. I had the conversation with Tracy and Alyssa just last week to place it. So I don't see it here, but it is in the works. So I will ask them if there was an update, if they were able to get ahold of her.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's probably on me. I didn't follow up with that work session request. So sorry, Counselor Mastry. Any other, I don't think that there was a resolution resolved after the fair. So perhaps we can discuss over email just to make sure that we're staying on time for the agenda. Moving on, the next agenda then, item that we have is the United Way. So can I have Ms. Farmer and Ms. Hicks to the podium, please? And it's going to be an update for United Way.
Good evening and thank you so much for allowing us to be here and present and talk about some of the exciting things happening with United Way of Pueblo County. I am, and I think we have a car point, which I know you're going to take good care of us over there. And while that's loading, my name is Shanna Farmer. I'm the president and CEO for United Way of Pueblo County. I am born and raised in Pueblo, love this community. And it is a true honor to serve in this position. I've worked in the community through constituent services, higher education, nonprofit work. And so this is just an absolute dream to be able to head up your United Way of Pueblo County. We can roll to slide number two and I will pass it off to my fabulous colleague here, Ms. Bianca Hicks.
Hey, good evening, everyone. And those that I have not met before, my name is Bianca Hicks. I am Vice President of Strategic Operations for United Way of Pueblo County. I have worked with United Way of Pueblo County for over 13 years now as of last week and have spent my entire career in nonprofit services. So as Vice President, I oversee our community investment process, which means all of our funding and partners as well as our programs. And we have several internal programs that we'll talk about here in a moment.
Next slide, please. So this is the first time that we are publicly sharing out pieces of our new strategic framework. So the board spent about a year really digging into what does United Way of Pueblo County need to look like? You know, reflecting on all of our history, but as we move forward and especially throughout COVID, we all can agree that it had been a challenging couple of years. And our nonprofit community was no exception to facing many of those challenges. And so through the process, we really, we really took the time to reflect and identify who we are. And it doesn't change at the heart of who we are. United Way, whether it was Community Chest, the United Fund, at the heart of it, we are here to serve the community. But we really clarified our mission and created a vision about being a catalyst for a sustainable, community-driven change that builds a healthy future with empowerment for all. And to do that, that we aim to serve as a trusted community leader, leveraging resources in support of collaborative solutions. We know that resources are so much more than just, you know, the grant making. Not to say just, that is really, really important work that we do. But how can we also really expand our nonprofit capacity? I think many funders would agree that there's never enough money for all the requests and needs that we get. And so how can we really invest strategically in our community for the greatest impact long-term? And so some of those core values around collaboration, equity and empowerment. And so our impact areas, we really focus on a few really key pillars. And that's around financial empowerment, youth empowerment, family strengthening, senior services and crisis intervention and mental health. And we achieve these impact areas through direct grant making, community investments. And also we provide and manage direct service programs, which Bianca will talk about a little more in depth here in a moment. And also really enhancing nonprofit capacity building. And so working with our partners to help identify the greatest needs and how can we stretch those dollars and all the resources that we as nonprofits have to invest to do the work that we do. And so we have some key expected outcomes of our work in our framework around meeting those community needs with real-time solutions. That is a great strike that United Way brings to the table. As you all have seen through COVID and through some of the partnerships that we have worked with the city on, we really try to rise in times of crisis and be responsive and quick in some of those grant making, emergency funds, those kinds of situations. We also really want to look at how do we get to the root cause of some of these issues? You know, Band-Aid approaches only go so far for so long. And we understand the need for that to some degree because there's always going to be those crisis services. But how do we really move the needle on issues of great importance in our community? And again, that term capacity building, our community, our nonprofits, really strengthening that to build up our community in the best and most effective and efficient way possible. Now, we pulled out one particular goal. Our strategic framework has four key goals with a whole lot of metrics and a whole lot of measurements, but I won't bore you with all those details. But I did want to draw your attention to goal two, which is really around addressing community needs through those responsive root cause focused solutions. And so we're aiming to do that and we're currently doing that. But we want to do that even stronger in the next three years around community collaboration and convening, providing excellent program delivery and our strategic community investments. And I will pass it off here to talk a little bit more in detail about some of those components.
All right, and we can head to the next slide. So the numbers on the slide show, we know that our impact is far greater than just these numbers, but they're pretty darn impressive. So we definitely like to share them. So when we look at our annual local impact and these numbers change year to year, but our recent numbers for volunteers were 457 volunteers, over 2,700 donors, nearly 300,000 in in-kind value, which is volunteer time and donations. And our leverage funds was close to $2 million back into the community. As a staff of eight, we do what we do mainly with our volunteers and partners in the community. So we wanted to share those numbers.
All right, next slide. And then just to give you a snapshot, this is from our 2021 Annual Impact Report. We actually just finished our most recent audit. So those numbers will be forthcoming. But this really shows investing in our community during that year. We did a lot around COVID, but also through our other community investments. And now to talk about programs.
So programs are the warm and fuzzy of what we do. But you may have heard of our United Way Middle School Mentoring Program. It is a mentoring program that pairs positive adult role models with middle school students one hour per week at the school during the lunch period. We are getting ready to head into our 11th year, this school year. We are actively seeking additional mentors. So if you know of anybody that has an hour a week that would like to be a part of this important program, please follow our website. But last year, we ended the year with 50 mentors and 50 mentees in this program. Head to our next one. All right, big number there. So this is our Pueblo Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. Last year, our 15 IRS certified tax preparers, volunteers, preparers and volunteers and interviewers and quality reviewers, we've got lots of volunteers that make this program possible. We're able to process more than 1,700 returns and actually brought back $1.6 million back into our community for our citizens in most need. This program is available to households with incomes of $55,000 or below. And we prepare both their federal and state taxes for free. All right, slide. Next slide is one that is familiar to the city. We were honored to be asked by the city of Pueblo last year to administer the Bank on Pueblo County Program. This is a banking access program that focuses on providing safe and affordable bank accounts to folks in our community. Pueblo County has more than 8.5% of its residents who are unbanked, meaning that they have no checking or savings account and 17.9% that are underbanked, meaning that they may have a checking account or a savings account. They're not using it. They're not accessing the services that are available to them. And when you see numbers of this rate in our community, what that means is folks are spending up to 10% of their income getting services that they could be getting through a bank or credit union. And that, those fees actually add up to over $40,000 over their lifetime. These fees may not be necessary. They could qualify for an account that could provide those services for free. And for our low to moderate income families, that's a huge hit on the dollars that they have coming in. So Bank on Pueblo County, we launched our coalition this year. Right now, we have one bank account that, excuse me, it's a credit union account that was certified in September and they have 30 accounts of folks who otherwise may not qualify for banking services who are now getting the help that we need. One of the folks who signed up initially went from having a bank on account, which is a very basic account. Her goal was to get into a regular account. She was able to do that. And now she has a loan. Her goal was to get into a regular account. She was able to do that, and now she has a loan with the credit union and is building positive credit. Thank you. Community investment. So really quick, this is a snapshot of recent grantees and program partners that we have. In a year, we have over sixty-five nonprofits that we work with. This is just the grantees recently. So when we look at donor designations and also federal dollars that we funded, those partners are not listed here.
Well, if you can't tell, we are very excited about the work that we do, and we have a lot to celebrate. And so we are kicking off our hundredth year, and I want to thank you for your support, and I hope to see many of you at our kickoff event on September seventh. But this is launching a hundred years. So we're celebrating a hundred years of what United Way has done in this community and talking about all the things that we need to do in the next hundred. But we're focusing on those three years of the framework, a little bit at a time, but it's going to be a really exciting year. So mark your calendars. We've already had a couple great events for this current hundredth year celebration, and lots more to come. We have a lot of lofty goals in this upcoming year because our community needs us. And so that's why we exist. That's why we're here. That's why we show up every day, because we want to make a difference and positive impact in our community. And that leads us to thank you so much for allowing us the time to brief you on this, and now we're happy to field any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Farmer and Ms. Hicks, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Oh, it seemed like you were, yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on some, you know, when we met, uh, several weeks ago, there was a project that you were working on. Could you elaborate on, on the project? And it seemed to me like you were looking for resources. I want to give you the opportunity. Uh, I was hoping that we'd hear more about that.
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. So one of our, our ideas and, and project concepts that we are floating with some different funders, including for some hopeful ARPA funding, it's a nonprofit lead center, and we're calling that a nonprofit leadership empowerment and development center. And so actually having, it's both in a building concept in terms of giving nonprofits space and access to space at below-market values that we would help to ensure to subsidize that through the partnership and through funders, where nonprofits can utilize the space, utilize resources, have some shared costs. Because again, nonprofits exist to do the work of their mission. And so if we can help take some of those administrative burdens off of them, that would be part of the, the goal of the center. And also to partner with other organizations. We know we are not the experts in all things nonprofit training, but being able to leverage and bring in additional nonprofit training opportunities for the region. And so our nonprofits in southeastern Colorado aren't always having to go north for those opportunities, but really being able to have that high-tech space where they could do that right here in our own backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, Shanna, is that the Financial Empowerment Center?
No. So I would love to, am I? Okay, so the Financial Empowerment Center, and certainly the, some of those center operations would ideally be housed in this all-encompassing hub. But Financial Empowerment Center is actually not just one location either. It, um, but it is in partnership. We've been working closely with the city on this initiative, and because of the hard work of the city to bring in funds from the Center for Financial Empowerment. Now, that is one that has matching dollars, so that's been our only kind of delay in, in starting that. But it's really to be able to offer one-on-one financial counseling, and it would really tie into some of the programs that Bianca talked about with Bank On and connecting them, but really having that as a resource for no cost. And co-locations would be very important, because we know folks who are already struggling, you know, it's a very sensitive topic when you talk about finances, or you talk about banks, and there may be some, some trust in institutions. And so meeting them where they are in organizations that they are already comfortable. And so having co-locations for those financial counselors will be really important as well.
Thank you. Um, cool. Any other questions at all? Well, thank you so much for your time, United Way. I appreciate it, and we'll see you September.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next presentation is the Trash Task Force. So can I have Mr. Martinez, Mr. Avina, and Mr. Huff to the podium, please? And there actually should be a clicker up there if you want to guide your own PowerPoint.
Yeah. All right, I want to first, uh, thank you all for inviting us here. Uh, like I said, my name is Adam Avina.
My name is Ben Huff.
And we're both environmental health specialists at the Public Health Department. We're here to talk about, um, our Trash Task Force, and I believe we do have a, uh, a PowerPoint for. Okay, cool. Uh, just an introduction for us. Uh, the Trash Task Force was first developed in, uh, two thousand and nineteen and fully implemented in early twenty twenty to combat legal dumping in Pueblo County. It is run by Ben and I, and we do dedicate forty hours a week, uh, to the Trash Task Force. And our activities as of, as follows, the monitoring, enforcement, community cleanup events, assist and waste tire, uh, program, and the community outreach.
So the biggest thing we do is our monitoring. We have basically passive and active monitoring. Uh, the first part of the passive monitoring is we have what are called Q-Star flash cams. They are cameras that we mount to telephone poles in areas of the county that see a large amount of solid waste, illegal dumping. That's what we call hotspots. The other type of active, um, monitoring we do is we actually go out into these fields and we patrol them. We try and find new dumps and identifiable material. That way we can start our investigation from there. Uh, the next part we have is probably our most versatile and most appreciated component, and that's community support. So community members, they're out there, they see this all hours of the day that we don't. So they contact us via our hotline, an email address, and Facebook to report illegal dumps.
All right, so the flash cams, so we have twelve flash cams, uh, throughout the, the, uh, the county. And it is installed by our city, uh, uh, traffic division. Uh, the cool things about them is that they are solar panelled and they are Wi-Fi, um, enabled. So why, um, and so that that actually, uh, assists with the wireless download of the pictures. And it's, and it's really nice, because you could put a customizable warning on it to deter any sort of dumping. That's all hours of the night. And it has a really bright strobe flash and a license plate mode where it will send out a low, um, a low flash, and it'll actually catch a license plate. All right, so here's a map of Pueblo. We have about approximately currently three, uh, cameras in the county, and then the other nine in the city limit. A couple of our hotspots, uh, that we have, each triangle represents a camera, and they're, the hotspots are Dick Truff's and Troy, Forty-Seven and Nielsen. On the west side, we have West Twelfth and Garnet, West Thirteenth and Oak. That's where we see the, the highest traffic going through.
So these are some pictures you might see, or these are the kind of pictures we will see from our cameras that we can use to identify vehicles coming and going and the materials that they're bringing in. Both of those things we use to help identify, uh, the, the suspects that are actually dumping. And then there have been occurrences where we've been out in the field and we have caught people in the act. So these are just some examples of, we're driving around, you know, doing our, our sentry, and there's happened to stumble across somebody who's unloading stuff off of a trailer, so onto the side of a path.
There you go.
And then this is the, uh, kind of material that we're trying to look for, any bills, junk mail, um, bank statements, and that ties that dump to a, to a, a citizen.
Okay, so the for enforcement is to say, we do find, um, a suspect. Uh, we do show up at their house or make any sort of contact with the suspect, and we give them a twenty-four to forty-eight hours to clean up their illegal dump. And then, uh, say we, if they do not comply, because we do like to get voluntary compliance. Oh. And it's great. Um, and then, uh, ticket or summons, uh, to municipal or county court if, say, we don't get the compliance. Um, and we do have assistance from Pueblo Sheriff's Department and the Police Department Code Enforcement. So the good news is, is that out of the fifty-two identifiable suspects, forty-nine of them did comply with us and did, uh, clean up their illegal dump. Uh, three were summoned to court. So the cleanup events that we've had, um, we conducted a three in the past calendar year, and these are the, uh, the dates that we've done and the volume. Um, on the nineteenth of February, we did, uh, of this year, we did, uh, do Highway Forty-Seven and Nielsen partnered with, uh, Four H, uh, Local Four H, and we did collect, uh, over three and a half. All right, so I'm sorry, five and a half tons, uh, the October. Second of October, we did clean up, uh, the Thirteenth and Oak Hyde Park area, three tons, and then finally just over four and a half tons. We at Dick Truff's and Troy, and we did partner with the, uh, Pueblo County Hockey Team. All right, our waste tire pickups, we do, uh, assist with our waste diversion program. Uh, just actually this past, uh, not the Saturday, but the following Saturday on the sixth, we did collect over twenty-one hundred tires. Uh, we partnered with Recycle Works, and we had the help of the inmates from Pueblo County Jail.
Yeah, so we do a lot of partnered events. That's kind of, we try to reach into the community and mobilize them to help us help them, right? Uh, we've helped with Dog Patch Community Cleanup. We've done two code enforcement abatements of camps along the Fountain Creek. And we've also contributed to the Household Hazardous Weights Event and the Citywide Team Up to Clean Up Event, Event. These are just some of our, um, our local community partners, a lot of governmental, uh, and nonprofit organizations that have chipped in and helped, helped us clean up or, uh, supplied volunteers, resources, anything that they can do to help us keep our community clean.
It's not going back. All right, here's a list of our successes. Um, we do have a lot of, uh, reporting, uh, so basically our word is getting out, and people do know how to, uh, in the community, know how to report illegal dump. And the re, reading, uh, the, uh, the remediation of dumps and enforcement, uh, throughout. Uh, one thing we're really happy to report is that we had to move two cameras in the Pueblo West area just off. One was off Plattville, the other one was off Purcell and Salini. We did have to move those cameras due to the low frequency of dumping, so that's a really good sign. And then also our Facebook interaction, uh, facebook.com slash Trash Task Force.
And with every success comes its own challenge. One of our most prominent challenges are difficulties with our cameras. So it's technology. Technology does not always work the way we want it to. Sometimes we have issues with the Wi-Fi connectivity. The repairs, they are pretty expensive, and they can take a while to repair or to be completed and then get sent back to us. Uh, license plates, sometimes they are not even present on vehicles. Sometimes the vehicles are just out of focus, so we can't actually read the license plates, or they aren't properly connected and registered to the vehicle itself. So we can't tie that plate officially to the vehicle. Basic logistics, sometimes we don't have a place to put the cameras. Um, they're big devices that have to go, you know, upwards of twenty feet on a telephone pole, since we don't have that available for placement. Um, weather is always a factor. They move cameras, they can, uh, falsely trigger cameras, and they can also, famously with snow, just block the camera, so it'll trigger, but it'll take a picture of nothing. Uh, SUVs, when they go into fields, we can't see what may be in the back of them, so we can't definitively say that they dumped something, even though it's suspected that they did. And then some fields, there's big open prairie, and it's really difficult to control access and to funnel vehicles through our cameras. So that's a, that's a challenge that we have been trying to address with, you know, some physical barriers to, if not completely prohibit traffic, but direct them more in a, uh, intentional channel.
Yeah, so other resources, we do want to deter, uh, get some signage, um, on a lot of these hotspots that we do say. Uh, we want to, in progress right now is that we do, we are making a dedicated webpage on PDP AT's website. Uh, we have ordered some game cams, just like the one that we have up there, and we're going to be strategically putting those out there, uh, not at the entrance in the field, but inside the field itself, uh, where we notice there's a lot of legal dumping. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Avina and Mr. Huff, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Some actually come from the same address, and so, uh, you know, the classic thing is, is that they would say that they hired someone to take their trash, and then they would, um, and they would dump it in the field. So we see like, uh, two names connected to one address. But to answer your question, there hasn't been a repeat.
I don't think that Counselor Graham's, um, mic is working anymore. Wanted to tell you, Daryl. Perfect. Um, other questions? Counselor Winter?
Thanks for that presentation. Hey, when you, when you say that you had offenders that went up, that went out and cleaned up their, their illegal dump, how do you know they just didn't go someplace else and illegal dump?
One thing that-
Did you track them to go to the dump and?
Or what we do is I hand them my card, and then I have them submit a receipt to, say, landfill CNC transfer station, uh, within the forty-eight hours after they have cleaned it.
Oh, okay. All right, so there's some follow-up on that.
Yes, there is.
Counselor Forrest?
You were here earlier, and you can see that this is a hot topic with, we get calls all the time. Uh, I guess, can you delineate when, uh, maybe, uh, our, our job as city councilman is to refer, you know, the, the situation to the city. It's usually through the, uh, Chief of Staff. And then they notify, uh, Code Enforcement. But when should we call you instead of Code Enforcement? And when, you know, it almost sounds like you may be overlapped somewhat. But what would be the most effective way for a city council person to report something? Because, uh, the public comes to us on a lot of issues all the time.
Sure. Uh, the best, the best way to do this is, uh, the illegal, our Trash Task Force Illegal Dumping Line. Uh, that's the best way to, to, uh, bring it to our attention. And we could then figure out where we go from there.
And I think the major delineation they're looking for is we focus predominantly on large solid waste. So furniture, appliances, mattresses is a big one, couches, large sums of household trash, as opposed to just like, um, accumulation of litter.
I don't know whether you have an opinion on this or not, but I've had it for a long time, that the fees that are charged at our landfill are high. And, uh, I, I know people that actually will go to Penrose or Midway or to the transfer station, uh, because it's much cheaper, it's, it's a much cheaper, uh, fee. Uh, do you have an opinion that maybe, uh, people that can't afford whatever they're charging out there, and you hear all these horror stories? Uh, do you two have an opinion as to whether or not this council should be looking at, uh, at the fees somewhere down the line to make them maybe more reasonable for our citizens?
Absolutely. Uh, that's one thing that, that is always a hot topic around, um, you know, of, of our job. And also, what people don't realize is that, um, here at the city, that Recycle Works is- And also, but people don't realize is that um here at the city, that recycle works is um. Is, is a really great resources and they do have reasonable grades.
And we do have a specified uh employee at the Health Department that focuses just on waste diversion. And she can help channel individuals to those resources to help, if not get them free rates, get them discounted rates for certain items.
Thank you.
Counselor Maishri.
How do those cameras work? Um, do they notify you when um they capture something? Or do you guys check them daily? Or how does, how do they work?
So we act, they do not notify us. We have to go and access the cameras onsite. Um, so we'll patrol depending on the frequency of the hotspot. We'll go a couple of times a week and actually download the images to our camera, so we can go through and see if we have any um tangible evidence.
Is there, how does that um help with your capture rate? I mean, because it's days of past.
Yes, so a lot of the times I have, the days do pass, so we do make sure that we do uh. Cat, uh, check the cameras on like a Monday. Uh, and then another two to three times depending on how hot that area is with legal dumping.
Is there a way to improve that? Is there a way to have cameras that like notify, so maybe you guys can catch people in the act? Is there a way to improve the system that you have going?
Uh, with the game cams is something that we're looking at, uh, but however, they do not. They do not um notify us, but it's something that we could have where we could catch inside the field rather than the entrances ins to the field.
Hmm. And um, why, why are you giving them opportunities to pick it up and? And remove it themselves? Does that, do you feel like that really deters them from doing it again? Or is it because you don't have the manpower to pick it up yourself? Um, why don't, why wouldn't you just straight find them?
Well, depending on the severity of it, uh, we, we like to go uh strive for voluntary compliance and the education part of it. Um, that's, that's the reason why we do have that window.
Was there ever a time where you just ticketed right there and find them right, you know, went straight to just finding them?
Not just yet.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tensio.
Could you tell me again where the cameras are over on uh? Your dog patch?
Okay.
I saw it on the map, but.
Okay.
There's three, right?
Yes, there are three in that field. Uh, we have one on forty seven and Nielsen, which is um. Right up, it's on Nielsen as right by that, I believe it's a uh gas line. Area.
North.
Yeah, north.
Around the curve.
Yes, around the curve. And then we have one at Cambry and Sheldon. And then uh Dick Travis and Troy on the other end.
Because I've, I've gotten some uh. Comments from people in that area that there's a lot of dumping. Are they helping?
They are, they are. Um, but it's just, you know, one of the resources, because we do have to do some more investigation.
Uh, well, I happen to like the idea that you get compliance on, on cleaning up these, these trash things. Uh, when I was at the Health Department, I was, they called us sanitarians at the time, but we did code enforcement, we did everything that you guys are doing. And our objective was to clean up. These messes, not to put people in court. You know, it's uh, the object is to get the place cleaned up. We could take people to court every day if we wanted to. But that's not the object. The object is to clean it up. So like, I, I like the, the way you guys are doing it. I mean, there does come a time when you have to cite somebody in the municipal court or county court, but. Uh, the least we can do of that, the better, the more cleanup we can do, the better.
Yeah.
Do you have uh the capacity to increase the amount of um cameras?
I believe so, yes. I'm not a hundred per- uh percent what we do.
Okay, just because I, I do like that idea of having more cameras um. That I'm, I'm wondering what the barrier is to not putting cameras, you know, at all hotspots in Pueblo County.
Well, I was gonna say, that's something we're trying to address with the introduction of the game cams. Is we're using those as a more flexible means of obtaining evidence. In areas that were previously blind spots for us, that we knew we couldn't get to with cameras. And we can kind of tuck these game cams a little bit better in the field to capture more of where the activity actually happens.
And similar to Counselor Flores's question, when people, when you, when they do um clean up the area twenty four to forty eight hours afterwards. Do they disclose why they are like, what made them illegally dump? Is it because of the dump fees or do they have any other?
Not really. Uh, at that time, they're pretty shaved of themselves for doing it. Uh, one fellow did admit to it and said that he was just being lazy.
Any other questions for Trash Task Force? Saying none, thank you so much Trash, Trash Task Force.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, our last presentation of the night is the Pueblo Airport Master Plan. So can I have Mr. Pedrosa? And Mr. Hayes? Not Andrew Hayes, though. It's a different Hayes.
This is Ryan.
You get the hot seat, sir.
This is the hot seat.
Thank you.
We're gonna go page by page.
Uh, good evening, just wanted to double check. Uh, we submitted a slide deck, Vince or Lee? Uh, over here? Okay, great. Um, good evening. Uh, Greg Pedrosa from the airport. With me tonight is Ryan Hayes from Mead and Hunt Airport Consultants. About three years ago or so, we underwent the project to. Provide the Pueblo Memorial Airport with a master plan study. This big binder here is the fruits of that labor, and I want to thank Ryan and his team for persevering through a pandemic to get this done. Um, without further ado, I'll turn it over to um Ryan Hayes and he'll provide an executive summary for you tonight. So uh, this is the um informational session for next week's. Adoption of the master plan as guiding document, so uh we'll talk a little bit about that and answer some questions after uh with that, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Greg. Um, can someone turn on the slides? So uh, I've got, I've got just maybe fifteen or so slides for you. I'm gonna try to keep it to about ten minutes. And then certainly want to make sure that all you counselors have an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, about the master plan, so next slide. Oh, click, I have a clicker. Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll go over our process and our schedule. Uh, the FAA has a very uh. Rigmented process for airport master plans that we follow. We'll talk a little bit about our recommendations for various areas of the airport. I want to share with you some of the robust efforts for stakeholder and public outreach that we um. Included in the process and, and obviously then, as Greg said, we need a. City Council acceptance next week um in order to close the FAA grant on this process. I, I'm very much a process guy and master planning uh follows, as I said, a very prescribed process that the FAA puts out. It's also a good point to mention that the FAA. Pays for this master plan process. Uh, they pay ninety five percent of the process, the state kicks in two and a half percent, so um you're really getting. A, a pretty good deal. Uh, in terms of the fees for this planning process, the reason the FAA supports this is, is. Is twofold, they um. By uh, by getting an airport master plan, they understand what the city of Pueblo. Uh, is planning to do with their airport over the next twenty years. They also know that when Greg comes to their office and knocks on their door to ask for funding for some of these projects at the airport. They have a, it kind of a heads up that uh, these are the projects that Pueblo Airport is looking to do over the next twenty years. Uh, so this is kind of a crazy process flow chart. We go through a fairly typical planning processes as any public facility does. Um, but really, the, the point of the master plan is to come up with a. Uh, a capital improvement program, a list of projects that the airport's gonna undertake over the next twenty years, so I won't go through each of these, but um. Uh, this is the process and uh we completed it, as Greg said, uh in the fall of last year. This was our schedule. Uh, we had timed public workshops. We also had a study committee that uh we organized amongst stakeholders. Um, the airline who was SkyWest at the time. Uh, as well as a lot of uh airport tenants were on our study committee. They, they provided input to the planning process and to the consultant team. Some of the uh. One of the big um efforts involved in this is a forecast of aviation activity. In particular, we talked to each of the tenants. Um, and find out how much. Demand we think there's gonna be for both aircraft operations and passenger service at the airport. Uh, the flight training company, which uh changed its name, C, CAE is now the current flight training company. Really wanted to, they, they have. Expansion plans that are fairly significant. They essentially want to double their operations at your airport, and so. Uh, that was a big component of the master plan is how do we uh, how do we double operations? Can the airfield accommodate such a capacity increase? And if not, what needs to be built to accommodate it? So they do about, the airport does about two hundred thousand annual operations, which makes it one of the busier airports in the state of Colorado. Um, but with that. Uh, with CAE's goal to double their operations, that we're looking at up to four hundred thousand in the next five years, so. Um, very busy and lots of aircraft movements. I won't go over this chart in detail, but this is the FAA's analysis methodology for determining the capacity of an airfield. So we went through this process, we determined that the facility's capacity is about four hundred and twenty thousand operations. So that doubling of the flight training operations really gets the airport close to its. Capacity threshold, which means we need some additional capacity and we. Recommend that the city consider a third parallel runway to accommodate uh those operations. So that's shown um as east-west option number three, right in the middle of the page um on this graphic. Uh. So right, this purple runway right here, the two, for orientation purposes, the primary runway. Uh, is located right here, and then there's a secondary training runway just north of that, and what we're recommending is a third runway. Uh, again, to the north of the existing two parallel runways. On the, on the terminal side, um. We also looked at the, the passenger activity levels um and the level of service being provided to the passengers in the terminal building. And the master plan came up with a couple of concepts for both a short-term expansion of the terminal as well as a long-term expansion of the terminal. The primary recommendation is uh. Oh, they can't see that, sorry. It, so there's a, the security screening checkpoint is not very linear. For those of you who have passed through the terminal, uh you make a lot of turns, the queuing. Um, there's not uh enough space for queuing, so uh what we're recommending is a slight increase in the size of the, or the footprint of the building to the north. To provide some additional checkpoint space as well as some departure lounge space. If the, we also did a layout, if the airport would ever attract a second uh air carrier. Uh, there would obviously need to be space for that second air carrier, and so this is kind of a longer term expansion uh uh concept floor plan for the terminal. On the land side, uh, so this is the, this is the conceptual development plan, this is really the. Uh, all of the projects that are being recommended in the master plan shown on one sheet of paper and. Uh, this drawing then gets turned into what's called an airport layout plan that gets submitted to the FAA for their official approval and blessing, and that. Process has already happened. Uh, just a little bit about stakeholder and public outreach. We had five study committee meetings. Uh, we also coordinated with uh PACOG, the Pueblo Area Council of Governments, attended a few of their meetings. And coordinated our planning process with some of their planning processes. Uh, we coordinated with PEDCO. We had two public open houses. Uh, as Greg said, we, the first one was entirely virtual as we were. Pretty uh in the midst of the pandemic at that time, the second one we did uh in person at the airport. Um, and public input from both meetings was incorporated into the planning recommendations and into the uh. Into the master plan. The FAA approved the forecasts of aviation activity in November of twenty twenty, and they approved the ALP. Uh, just in the spring of this year. So I know that was fast. I'm happy to go back to any of those slides if you have specific questions about any of the recommendations or, or, or the process on the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Pedrosa for that presentation. What questions are there from Council, Counselor Flores?
Uh, several weeks back, we had a presentation of the new fixed base operator. Uh, that has a contract with the military. I got the impression that they were going to be a lot busier. Than the current uh, or the retiring, I guess, FBO. Uh, was that taken into consideration when you did this study? Because it was such a new sale, uh, I'm, I'm just curious as to whether it's included or it's been omitted.
I, I think initially, uh. We did uh normal forecasts for military, they, these, I think the FAA's criteria is that there is zero growth for military operations. Just to follow their template for conducting this study. Um, but no, that is a excellent observation that, yeah, we need to be prepared for. That growth and that explosion from what we're being told of how busy we're gonna be with the relationship that Freeman Air Group has with military. Uh, folks, so we should be seeing a lot more military, which is not necessarily reflected in this study, but I, I think overall. What this study tells us in a nutshell is we're, we need to be prepared for growth.
Uh, the, the reason it's hard to forecast military growth at a civilian airfield is the Department of Defense doesn't necessarily share. How they plan to use civilian airfields because, you know, for defense purposes. Uh, but we recognize this airport is used by the military helicopters and fixed wing aircraft. Um, you've got a great, long, wide runway that can accommodate almost any. Type and size of military aircraft, and so maintaining that ability to accommodate those aircraft and fitting them in is important.
I've often said that, you know, for a community our size, that, you know, the airport is really a gem. Uh, something that you wouldn't find in a city our size and. Uh, the study, obviously, none of us have seen it and it looks like there's a lot of material, material in there. Is there anything about marketing our airport? I always feel like we don't utilize, we never utilized our airport to its full potential. And there has to be an economic development piece that tells us. That there are many more opportunities. Um, a company, a transport company that's delivering products. Uh, it would be an ideal situation to have a warehouse here or that. So the question is whether or not there's any marketing advice in this study.
I'll chime in for uh, that, that does hit close to home to me as my degree is in marketing at this point, so um. I see it as a need uh just from my seat at the airport, but no, I, that does necessarily specifically address, you know, you need to do X, Y, Z to market this airfield. But it is the underlying current that, yeah, we want to grow, we're, we're primed and ready to grow, so we need to, to take care of business on the marketing side of things to help facilitate that growth.
My last question is uh, a, a councilman at Tensia is always telling us to think big. And I, I have gotten uh. Some advice from a uh friend that I have in Denver. And he said that currently in Colorado, there is no way of, of. Pushing people. A- around the state, it would be in, just in the state of Colorado. If somebody wanted to get from Grand Junction to Durango or Durango to Denver or from Pueblo to Grand Junction. It, it's very difficult for any business person that just wants to have an overnight flight and get business done and then go back. Uh, my thought and his thought was that we should have some sort of uh, an airline that would be willing to do this. Just inside the state of Colorado and that it would be an amazing economic development uh. Uh, idea uh that nobody's capitalized on, and uh I just throw that out and tell me I'm crazy.
You, you're not crazy, and I think we've had that discussion too uh amongst a few of us ourselves that. Almost like a bus route just hits those, those stops at a specific time and every other, every day or every other day. And it's just making a run around Colorado, which I think that would be a, a way to connect all of our communities together instead of needing to go from here to Denver then, or there to Denver then, so.
And I'll just add that there, it's an exciting time in the industry. There's a lot of technology, there's a lot of companies that are looking at uh advanced air mobility and. Electric aircraft and um bringing the cost down. Bringing the cost down for these type of aircraft. So some interstate. Service, passenger service is certainly something that's possible. The benefit that the. Pueblo Airport has is lots of space to accommodate that type of activity. Um, you know what I mean?
Counselor Tensio.
Yeah, that new runway, uh, that's interesting to hear about because they, they got rid of that short runway that was directly in front of the, uh. The, um. Terminal. And that was really valuable to, uh, general aircraft. And a lot of small planes. Use that stayed out of the way of the big airplanes on, on the, uh, longer aircraft. Uh, have any idea when that one might be put together?
That's gonna be an interesting one, sir, because, uh, what happened when we removed that one from the apron edge behind terminal, it was relocated to the north. So there is still that second small runway out there. It's just now to the north and demand is gonna dictate. If that next third parallel, we're calling it, gets consideration and it would be. Probably in the near future, if we start talking, having that discussion.
I would think.
Not quite there yet.
I would think that we should start talking about it because there's a lot of, uh. Uh, general aviation current aircraft out there and they could use their own. And it would be specifically for them, just like that, that one was in the beginning.
Other questions? So it sounds like we're growing with military. Sounds like we're growing with training, like flight school. How do we grow? How do we get another, like a second commercial carrier, like Southwest?
In my humble opinion, I believe it is, it is, begins with investing in ourselves and our own infrastructure. Continuing with our design to extend that concourse to put the restrooms on that side of TSA. That seems to be our number one. Complaint that people get through TSA, there's an issue with the plane, weather delay or whatnot, and they're stuck. Without a restroom, without a vending machine on that side of security, which now means that they have to use the potty. They have to come out of. The concourse and then get re-screened. And we all know how fun that is to go through TSA screening and perhaps you'll be the one that gets picked to go into closed doors. Uh, but it's, it's in, it's cumbersome to try to, to say, you know, we want to be a big boy airport and we're still confined to our, our little building there. So. Um, and through the mayor's guidance here, I mean, I'll, I'll give you some credit there, sir, that, uh, you've really been supportive of us going forward with that design to have a shelf ready project for a lot of this, uh. Um, by, uh, uh, federal funding that's coming through aviation means to do specifically that renovation of terminals. So we're gonna have a, a plan ready in place on the shelf, ready to put in front of, uh, a contractor to come and get it done. So we're, we're in a good position there. But how do we get more commercial airline? How do we get more passengers? You know, it, it's, it's a tough. Industry out there right now, Ryan, as a, as a aviation consultant, I'm sure you can, um, back this up, but. The pilot shortage, the lack of, um, of airplanes, it'll reach in the end of their lifespan. Um, a lot of uphill challenges for aviation. Industry folks and, and we're unfortunately, we're gonna see a little bit of that with a little downgrade and potentially downgrade in our service, um, here coming around the corner.
We did do some airline analysis in this master plan to at least quantify the leakage, the leakage is defined as the. Pueblo area passengers who drive to Colorado Springs or drive to Denver and it's. Unfortunately, it's really high. It's about ninety percent and it's because. And then, and it's like that for every airport within a two hundred and fifty mile radius of Denver because the airfares are so low. Because they have three competing airlines in Denver. It's just, um. You just can't compete with people driving to. Yeah.
And it's thinking outside the box to Counselor Flores's.
Sure.
To, to Counselor Flores's point too, though, if we're offering something outside the box, maybe it's not to Denver, it's to Phoenix, it's to Dallas, it's to Las Vegas. I think that one was pretty popular when we had that one. Um, we, so we just gotta keep beating the bushes and, you know, how, how, I'm, I'm trying to enlist our friends from PEDCO to keep shaking those trees too from their end. And all of us as ambassadors of Pueblo and the Pueblo Airport, you know, let's, let's keep those things on top of our mind. And, and when we're making those connections and doing those networking things. Let's think about, uh, how we can get bigger, do, do bigger. So.
We can help with that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Greg. Thanks, Mr. Hayes. We will, we will work on that. Excellent.
For clarification, I'm sorry. Sorry, miss. Um, the, um, link for this document is, has been posted with the agenda. Um, it's on our website, flypueblo.com. And I believe, uh, the, the, the next. Next Monday night's meeting, we'll have that opportunity to, um, to adopt this. So thank you again for your time.
Is that for second reading, Greg? Or is it first reading? Oh, it's resolution. Great. Excellent. Well, we look forward to that, uh, next Monday. And with that, it's six forty-five and I conclude this meeting. You're welcome, guys. It's still sun, sunny out.